Okay, before we begin, this is a reminder that this is a remote meeting and teleconference used in Zoom. Listen to one MRSA, section four oh three dash A. Welcome to the Safety Planner Board Meeting for July seventh, two thousand and twenty-one. This meeting will come to order. This is a public proceeding unless the board specifically votes to grant your executive session, you have the right to hear everything that is being said and to look at all the exhibits that are offered. Please note, if I share, if you were unable to see or hear something. Please know that if any Planner Board members have any potential conflicts of interest, of which they are aware, they will disclose the conflict prior to the board initiating a hearing or action on an application. All persons speaking will be asked to state their name and address and then proceed. That's all the question of the chair. Politician only may be limited to five minutes per speaker. Each item, the applicant will be asked to describe the project thereafter. The chair will ask opponent of the project to speak, followed by opponents. And those who are any of the foreign or against, you may want to ask a question or make a general comment. Everyone who wants will have the opportunity to speak to the board through the chair. Any questions must go to and through the chair, who will then decide at what point to either ask staff or the applicant to respond. Chair may wait until the left of testimony has concluded to seek answers to any questions that are raised by the public or board members. Please note that ruinous, hostile behavior, clapping, cheering, boring, etc., will not be tolerated. These behaviors occur, the chair does discretion, may terminate the hearing and reschedule it for another date. In addition, the chair is discretion will limit repetitious comments, though it is appropriate for an individual to indicate that he or she agrees with a previous speaker. Prior to closing the public hearing, the chair will ask if there are any new comments, and the applicant will be allowed to make a single rebuttal in response to the testimony which was provided. During the public hearing portion of the meeting, once the public hearing portion of the meeting is closed, the chair will accept no additional public comment. However, a member of the board, if she has discretion, may ask the applicant or a member of the public to respond to a question. This will not reopen public comment. Planner Board decisions are based solely on whether an applicant has provided sufficient evidence to meet the requirements of local, state, and federal laws. This regard, public testimony is most effective when it considers the impact of a project in St. Petroulian site plan, subdivision, or zoning ordinances, or other relevant regulations. After the board votes on the merits of each project, it will vote on the written finding of fact. Some findings may substantially affect any appeal rights and also as a matter of courtesy. Board asks that those attend the meeting, not leave until the board has adopted the findings for the project you are interested in. After the Planner Board makes its final decision, any reconsideration by the board must be made at its next regularly scheduled meeting. Anyone wishes to appeal the board's final decision, he or she must do so within thirty days. City's ordinances and comprehensive plan are available for viewing on the city's website and in the Planning and Development Department's office at nine nineteen Main Street in Sanford. Remember, this is a public hearing, you have the right to hear and see what is happening, and we welcome public participation. Okay, this will be a good time to take a roll call.
Okay, I guess I'll do that. John, unless you're prepared to do it?
No, I'm prepared to do it. Diane Connolly.
Present.
Joe Hanslip.
Present.
Oliver Jones.
Here.
Jack McAdam.
Here.
Thomas Morgan.
Here.
Crystal Tenney.
Here.
And Lenny Hor.
Present.
So six zero.
Six zero or seven zero?
Seven zero.
Okay. Thanks. Okay, and that brings us to the minutes for June second, two thousand and twenty-one. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second, Jack.
Okay, and we'll call who?
Diane Connolly. Joe Hanslip.
Abstain.
Oliver Jones. Jack McAdam. Thomas Morgan.
Yes.
Crystal Tenney.
It was not present during this meeting.
And Lenny Hor.
Yes. Now, the minister indicate that Oliver Jones was present, was he not? I didn't notice, was he a late arrival, or?
Oliver, this is not for the last meeting, it's for the meeting before that.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
So, I, the motion passes, um, three zero.
Wait, hold, hold up a second. I think, are we missing a vote on this?
Yes.
Yeah, um, okay, because Oliver was, was present on the other one. I don't know what we're looking at on the screen here. This wasn't on our agenda.
Yeah, that's not the right minutes, I don't believe, or maybe it is, yeah.
We had June, okay, June second and June sixteenth?
No, just the June second meeting.
Okay, so let's, so let's get rid of this one. Okay, so I see one, two, three, four, five, five people.
So Crystal was also in attendance then. So maybe we should, you want to go back through the votes again?
Yeah, we got to do this again, I guess.
So I'm going to start over. Diane Connolly. Joe Hanslip.
Abstain.
Oliver Jones.
Yes.
John, or Jack McAdam, sorry.
Yes.
Thomas Morgan.
Yes.
Crystal Tenney.
Yes.
And Lenny Hor.
Yes.
So the motion passes five zero with two abstains.
Did we have a second set of ministers approve?
They weren't on the agenda, so you'll see them at the next meeting.
Okay, so we'll take those up next time. Okay, so we'll go to hearings and business. Under role business, this is file sixteen dash twenty dash R. This is Midtown Mall, Chair Ian Howseal. Beth, you want to give us any background on this?
Sure. Ian Howseal, on behalf of the city of Sanford, is requesting approval for an amendment to a minor site plan, make parking lot improvements at the Midtown Mall's upper lot. The city does own that property. It's located at the intersection of Main Street and Washington Street, and it is in the Sanford Downtown Design District. The Design Review Committee did review this project and make recommendation and to, um, to approve the project with the condition that signs be posted around the speed table to warn motorists of the speed table. And the Site Plan Review Committee did review this project on June fifteenth, and they made a recommendation for approval with a number of conditions which are captured in the draft motion that was in the report. And I believe that the applicant and consultant are here this evening to do a brief presentation prior to the public hearing.
Okay, Ian, are you with us?
Yes, I'm here, and I'd like to hand it over to, um, uh, sorry, just Seth. He's been the landscape architect that's been helping us along the way. I'm sorry, Seth, I just blanked on your last name. I was a Cedar Landscape Architects. Go right ahead.
Hello, everyone, this is Seth Kimball with Cedar Landscape Architects. Nice to be back to the board to present this project. I will be presenting my screen, so bear with me for a moment. And also forewarn you, I'm home with a four and a half year old who's behind me, so if I'm disrupted, that is why. So since our last meeting, um, we've made revisions necessary, a handful of them. We're considering the speed table. We've, um, we've gone ahead and created a detail for you to review, which I believe most of you have already reviewed, but I can answer any questions about that and also look at the detail. The pedestrian promenade we're proposing connects from Main Street through the current Midtown Mall parking lot, and then through between the Midtown Mall along the arcade and across to the waterfront park. We see this is a very essential access for pedestrian safety, also for the, um, for the, you know, the marketability of the Midtown Mall, being able to, for pedestrians to be functioning along Main Street, and also passing safely through the parking lot and down through to the park. Just to kind of give you a brief update on some of the adjustments that we've made since our last presentation, one of the major ones that was discussed during our last presentation was the entrance that we're proposing. We've, we've now maintained the existing entrance into the parking lot. Originally, we're proposing to shift it, but we're leaving that as is. We are also leaving the exit from the bank as is with a slight modification to the curb. Some of the other adjustments we've made, we've looked at the grading plan, there were some concerns about pooling and water in particular at the, um, at the access across where we have the raised ramp. I can breeze you through that in just a moment. Some of the other adjustments we made were shifting utility away from, so it's a ten foot separation where the lighting electrical line went through. We also looked at the plantings, we've reviewed with the fire chief, who has given his blessing on this project, as well as reviewed with Parks and Rec, the proposed plantings. Just to bring everyone back up to speed, what we're proposing is to maintain the entrance, the pedestrian promenade carries through and across the Midtown Mall. Here's the speed table. For the fire chief, as we were working through some of the turning radiuses, we've created twenty foot radiuses in every location that the fire truck will be moving, was to be tipped down concrete curbs, so if they, if needed to, to hop those curves, they can do so, even though the, um, the radius works fine without them. The, along the pedestrian promenade, we pushed the benches back away from the kind of main route, pedestrian route, for maintenance issues, so there isn't any hitting on plows. It also creates kind of these nice nooks for pedestrians to sit along the promenade. Here's our proposed planting plan. Another item that was, was raised was snow removal. You'll see on the first page in our notes, we have kind of a summary of how snow removal will take place, you know, much like many large parking lots after storms, in particular here in Maine, you know, there's large snowbanks that just need to be removed, so as part of the maintenance program, you know, larger snowbanks will be removed so that they're not injuring the amount of parking space in the Midtown Mall. In other locations along the promenade, we were showing locations for, to pile snow until it does need to be removed. That allows, you know, a safe route for pedestrians to cross without hindrance of snowbanks. Since our last presentation, this is the grading plan that we looked at, and to show that there's all, there's positive drainage in all directions, and, you know, working with some of the existing catch basins, and much of the existing grades, I'm trying to limit as much disturbance as possible. And I feel like this, this is meeting standards, and I believe the engineer has reviewed this and has given this blessing as well. There are site details, there's a tip down curb, the mantel tip down curb detail, the granite bench being a monolithic piece, very durable and timeless piece of furniture. It will be two feet wide, and I believe ten feet in length. And you see on detail five, we're showing the, the raised table. It's a five percent grade change, so it's a very, very minimal, even handicap accessible, if that's any, any concern. And you can see this is the level area the promenade crosses and the five percent pitch on either side. It's an east. The five percent allows for cars, even like very low riding cars, not to, not to bottom out, and provides a nice transition, but it also provides the handicap accessibility without having to do any tip down, so ease of travel for both pedestrians and handicap accessibility. As you mentioned earlier, the, the design review board was okay with, with the, with the crossing and the raised table, as long as we have, we'll be providing signage to indicate that the speed pump and its location. I think, I think it's doing wonderful things, and in particular, it's just becomes a bit of a drag race across here. There's a long linear that cars could be speeding through, you know, raising risk for pedestrian crossings, so I think this does a wonderful job in slowing that traffic and increasing the pedestrian safety. With that, I'm happy to, is there any, any questions the board has? Is any, any particulars about the, about the design? Happy to answer.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah?
I apologize for interrupting, excuse me, Seth. I just received a phone call from Joe. He got booted out, he's trying to reboot, so Molly, can you watch for him, please? Thank you.
Yeah, I'm having some issues with my connection here too, for some reason. Okay, at this point, I'm going to declare the public hearing open. If there's anybody that wants to speak in favor of this application?
Mr. Chair, I do want to read into the record an email that I received from Blaine Boudreau. He emailed yesterday and indicated that, quote, "I am unable to attend the planning board meeting tomorrow evening due to a scheduling conflict. I am in favor of the plan of the improvements to the Midtown Mall parking lot. In the interim, if there are any questions, please let me know. Thanks." Blaine A. Boudreau, President, Chief Executive Officer, nineteen, excuse me, nine hundred Main Street, Sanford, Maine, and Blaine is the Chief Executive Officer for Partners Bank.
Yeah, sounds good. Um, is there anybody else in the meeting that would like to speak in favor of the application? You can use your raise your hand feature on Zoom. Okay, is there anybody who is opposed to the application who would like to make a Okay, any general comments, either foreign or against? I don't see anybody with their hand up, so I guess there's nothing. Either Molly, or John, or Beth, if you see something, let me know. I don't see anything on there, so. I think with that, we can close the public hearing. Well, I guess we can make any comments or questions for the Planner Board? If anybody has any questions? Any questions, Diane?
No, I just have, I'm looking at the plans. One plan I'm looking at, I'm hardly seeing like one, two, two handicap spots of parking.
May I respond?
Yes.
Yeah, I believe that the code enforcement officer during staff, or you also noticed that as well. There, there have been some parking changes at the Midtown Mall since these plans were originally prepared. There's parking spaces over in the far left corner, near the, um, the, the, the Bubba Fries, and then additionally, I think you're seeing two additional spots included at the end, at the end of that, at the end of the walkway on the north side as well. There are spots, yep, you're, you're pointing out, and we will verify that they, you know, that they're, they're sufficient for appropriate parking, a percent quantity, but we've been, what we've been trying to do over the last couple of years is move the parking to the, to the perimeter and associate it with existing ramps for, for easier access for the, of, of park, uh, handicap parking.
Okay, because there was one or two down by the Aroma Joe's at the rear entrance of the Trust Building, and I don't see those marks, so I was just double checking, that's all.
Yeah, we'll, we'll make sure that absolutely there's adequate park, uh, handicap parking. I'm, I'm not as familiar with those. I was on the site today, and I believe there's still marked there. I see them towards the Aroma Joe's side on the east. You can, it, it has that telltale little buffer around it. Seth, if you're controlling, yeah, you've got your cursor on it just about now, right there at that corner.
Got it.
And I believe if you go a little bit more to the left, you'll see another set, and then there's another set in front of SIS as well. Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
Hi, so Lenny, I have one question. I can't remember if we answered this previously. Are there any bicycle racks, little places?
Yes, um, they're located here. We're proposing, I believe, four new racks at the level area along the plaza, which is right here on the perimeter.
Okay, thanks. Jack or Tom, any questions?
I am all set.
I did have a, this is Crystal. I did have a question about snow removal, but that was already addressed.
Hi, Jack?
No, I'm all set, I'm all set.
Okay, Oliver, any questions?
I'm all set.
So Beth, I guess we can move forward on this one.
Okay. Um, do you want to go through the findings of fact?
Sure.
Okay. Um, so first we'll go through the combinations, and we'll start with the ones that are not, uh, not applicable. In all of these cases, the explanation is either site is fully developed, or no changes are being made to existing conditions. And so, let's see, just wanted to check that carefully, or in the, in the case of the airport approach, and it's not in the airport zone. So, starting with two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point one, which is use of the site, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point nine, which is sewage disposal, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point eleven, which is natural features, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point twelve, which is groundwater, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point fourteen, which is solid waste, and two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point sixteen, which is shoreland zoning, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point eighteen, which is buffering, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point nineteen, which is the airport. And as I said, the recommendation is that the condition, or that the standard is not applicable with those explanations that I noted already.
Motion to accept.
Second, Diane.
Lenny, who got it?
Yeah, I think Diane, uh, yeah, I think Diane was a little louder than Jack, so I'll give it to her.
So now we'll do a roll call. Diane Connolly.
Yes.
Joe Hanslip.
Yes.
Oliver Jones.
Yes.
Jack McAdam.
Yes.
Thomas Morgan.
Yes.
Crystal Tenney.
Yes.
And Lenny Hor.
Yes.
So the motion passes seven zero.
Okay, the next one is two eighty, and the rest of these are all singles. Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point two, access to the site. The recommendation is that the standard is met. The explanation is that Main Street and Washington Street have adequate capacity to accommodate traffic generated.
Motion to accept. Second, Oliver.
Diane, or Diane? Joe Hanslip.
Yes.
Oliver.
Yes.
Jack.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Crystal.
Yes.
And Lenny.
Yes.
The motion passes seven zero.
The next one is two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point three, access into the site. The recommendation is that the standard is met. The explanation is that access to the site provides minimum site distances.
Motion to accept.
Seconded.
Diane.
Uh, motion to discuss.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
The site, the, the exit coming in and out of the mall onto Main Street, there's a no left turn there, going out of sight. Is there adequate signage across the street to tell people, don't make that left out
That probably should be directed to Matthew.
Yes, and for this project, we haven't proposed any changes to the current signage for that entrance and exit area.
Okay, thank you. Jonathan, my answer is yes.
So we'll continue the roll call. Joe?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
And Lenny.
Yes.
So the motion passes seven zero.
Next one is two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point four, internal vehicular circulation. The recommendation is that the standard is met with condition. The explanation is that with the condition that asphalt paving, concrete details, binder course details, and signage warning about the speed table are revised to the satisfaction of the city engineer, the standard is met.
Motion to accept.
Seconded, Diane.
So we'll do the roll call, Diane.
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
So the motion passes seven zero.
The next one is two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point five, pedestrian circulation. The recommendation is that the standard is met. The explanation is that anticipated pedestrian circulation generated by the new pedestrian promenade has safe access between parking areas and structures.
Motion to accept.
Seconded, Diane.
So we'll do a roll call, Diane?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
And Lenny?
Yes.
Motion passes five, or seven zero.
The next one is two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point six, stormwater management. The recommendation is that the standard is met with condition. The explanation is that with the condition that concerns regarding the catch basin is described by and to the satisfaction of the city engineer, and assessment of condition of current underground stormwater drainage system, the standard is met.
Motion to accept.
Diane?
Excuse me, before you go there, who made that second?
Um, I heard Crystal first.
Thank you, sorry.
Diane?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
And Lenny?
Yes.
So the motion passes seven zero.
Next one is two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point seven, erosion control. The recommendation is that the standard is met, and the explanation is that adequate provisions will be made for erosion control.
Motion to accept. Second, Oliver.
Lenny, who got it?
Um, I'm going to say Oliver.
So we'll do the roll call, Diane?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
And Lenny?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
The next one is two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point eight, water supply. The recommendation is that the standard is met with condition. The explanation is that with the condition that addition of a water line in the alleyway, between the alleyway, sorry, hold on, between the alleyway and St. Ignatius Street are made as described by and to the satisfaction of the superintendent of the Water District, the standards met.
Motion to accept.
Seconded, Diane.
Roll call, Diane?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
And Lenny?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
The next one is two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point ten, utilities. The recommendation is that the standard is met. The explanation is that utility connections will be maintained and improved.
Motion to accept.
Second, Crystal.
Roll call, Diane?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
And Lenny?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
The next one is two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point thirteen, exterior lighting. The recommendation is that the standard is met. The explanation is that exterior lighting associated with proposed development will be capped, shielded, directed downward, and retained on-site.
Motion to accept.
Seconded.
Roll call, Diane?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
And Lenny?
Yes.
So the motion passes seven zero.
Next one is two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point fifteen, landscaping. The recommendation is that the standard is met with condition. The explanation is that with the condition that trees be maintained in a way that provides passable travel for fire apparatus as set by the Fire Marshal's Office, the standard is met.
Motion to accept.
Second, Crystal.
Roll call, Diane?
Mr. Chair, motion to discuss for a minute?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, there's a lot to read in this package. Who's responsible for the upkeep of like walk?
Sorry Diane, we lost you. Who is responsible for what?
For watering all the?
Um, technically, I guess I'll answer that. Technically, Parks and Recreation is responsible for maintenance of landscaping on public property. So the assumption, my assumption is that they would be responsible to keep, you know, to keep the trees watered.
Okay, I only ask that with the kind of heat we've been getting. Thank you.
Yeah, in our, in our documents as well, there's a one-year tree warranty that is indicated for whoever's installing it. So typically a landscape contractor would have to replace any trees or plant material that dies after that one year.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Jonathan.
So we'll continue the roll call. Joe?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
And Lenny?
Yes.
So the motion passes seven zero.
And the last one is two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point seventeen, technical and financial capacity. The recommendation is that the standard is met. The explanation is the applicant has demonstrated adequate technical and financial capacity.
Motion to accept.
Seconded, Diane.
So the roll call, Diane?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
And Lenny?
Yes.
So the motion passes seven zero.
Mr. Chair, would you like me to read a draft motion for your consideration?
Yes, please.
The Site Plan Review Committee, excuse me. Sorry. The Planning Board accepts the information in the June 11, 2021 summary report and the June 15, 2021 Site Plan Review Committee recommendation grants the requested waivers and fines that the proposed amendment to the minor site plan to make parking lot improvements to the midtown mall upper lot on property owned by the City of Sanford and locating it, located at the intersection of Main Street and Washington Street in the Sanford Downtown Design District has satisfied the requirements of Article 16 of the zoning ordinance subject to the submission of information and conditions described below. One by July 7, and let's change that now, it's going to be, I gotta have a date. Hold on just a second, let me pull this up. By July 28, 2021, unless other arrangements are made with the Planning Director, provide five copies of revised plans to the Planning Department that adequately respond to issues raised in the review, which are part of the following conditions of approval. A, verify that a minimum 5% of handicap space requirements have been met to the satisfaction of the Director of Code Enforcement. B, a detail be made to the plans regarding the existing catch basin nearest the proposed table that the area immediately, excuse me, that the area immediately surrounding and leading up to the basin remain impervious to promote unimpeded stormwater flow to the basement to the satisfaction of the city engineer. C, add a specification to all concrete details for required reinforcement by welded steel fabric to support vehicular traffic and fiber reinforcement for non-vehicular areas to the satisfaction of the city engineer. D, add a specification to the asphalt paving detail for the binder course and measurements as specified by the city engineer and to the satisfaction of the city engineer. E, a binder course as specified by the city engineer be added to unit paving in areas that may experience vehicular traffic. F, the multiple curb, the mountable curb reveal is detailed in note 11 on the sheet L5-00 be removed. G, location and design details about signs to warn drivers about the speed table be added to the plan. Two, snow be removed by the owner as to not impede fire apparatus ability to turn safely. Three, trees be maintained in a way to provide a passable travel for the apparatus and tree canopies not impede the travel way to the satisfaction of the Fire Marshal. Four, all curbs including the walkway island facing Washington Street be mountable as seen on sheet L5-00. Five, standard conditions of approval number two, three, six, seven, eight, and nine. Let me, I'm gonna back off from that for a second. Let me modify this in a second. Oh, please. Yeah, let me revise that. Hold on a second. Okay, standard conditions of approval number three, seven, and nine regarding AutoCAD submission, pre-construction conference, and alteration to approved plans.
Motion to accept.
Seconded, Diane.
Roll call, Diane?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
And Lenny?
Yes.
Uh, motion passes seven zero.
And could I just ask you to indicate who made the motion and second? I was too busy typing.
Tom made the motion.
Thank you.
Diane seconded.
Thank you. All right, so the motion passes seven oh.
Thanks, Ian.
Yes, thank you everyone.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Are we ready for the next one?
Yeah.
You need a minute to change gears here.
Yeah.
Me, I'm sorry, I've gotta catch up with you guys. Okay.
That's it?
Yep, ready for the next one, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so under Old Business, this is file eighteen dash one E dash S. This is for Coastal Oaks LLC, Chair of Ethan Scott. Beth, can we have some background on this one?
Sure, the applicant is requesting approval for a minor subdivision for a portion of land that's owned by Duke Van Chu and located at eighteen Witham Street in Springvale, and that's parcel K18-8A. The acquisition of a portion of this parcel will require, will result in the formation of a subdivision defined by three lots, K18-8A, K18-8B, and new lot K18-8C. On the new lot, Coastal Oaks LLC is proposing two slab-on-grade condominiums to be built on an existing vacant foundation. So just as back, a little more background. The Site Plan Review Committee tabled this item at its October 20th, 2020 meeting. The Planning Board conducted the public hearing the next day on the 21st of October. And then did not close the public hearing. And we have not, we've received some material. Part of the delay was that the applicant had difficulty securing a land surveyor. They finally did get that and they provided some revised material. The application is still not, has not responded to all of the issues that were raised by the Site Plan Review Committee at its October 20th meeting. Our recommendation is that you take this item off the table, continue your public hearing, and then close your public hearing. And that will start the 60-day clock for the applicant to provide the required materials and for the Planning Board to take action on this application.
Okay. And I'll just remind the applicants too, for our bylaws, that when you're making a presentation, you do have up to 20 minutes to speak on the application. Is there anybody here tonight to speak on behalf of this application? Is the applicant here?
I don't believe so.
They are not here? Is there anybody?
Have you seen either King Weinstein or Ethan?
Ethan? No, they're not on the call.
Okay, they're not here, so they won't be able to make a presentation for you. I don't know if there's anybody in the audience to speak to this item.
Okay, with that, I'll declare the public hearing open. If there's anybody in the audience tonight that would like to speak on this application on behalf of it, feel free to speak up or use the raise your hand feature in Zoom. Is there anybody who is opposed to the application who would like to make a comment? Okay, either for or against, any general comments on the application? I don't think anybody has their hand up. All right, CNN, I'll declare the public hearing closed. And I think we can move on to the next item, is that correct?
Well, you need a motion to table.
That's true, yeah, we got a table.
Move it stable, Tom. Seconded.
Seconded, Diane.
Okay.
So we'll do the roll call.
Lenny, who got it? Who got the motion, who got the second, Lenny? I heard two voices.
It was Tom, I think.
Tom made the motion to table. Who made the second?
Diane.
Diane, thank you.
Can I get somebody in the background?
That's my daughter talking.
Okay.
So we'll move on to the roll call. Diane?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
And Lenny?
Yes.
So the motion passes seven zero.
Okay. Now we can take up the next item, I think. Are you ready for the next one? Okay. So the third item under Business is Old Files, this is a file R24-40. This is Dana Ventures LLC, Chair of Tom Harmon, Civil Consultants. If you want to give us any background on this one as well, Beth?
Sure. The applicant is requesting major site plan approval for a new five-year permit to continue mineral extraction at the Dana Ventures gravel pit located off Country Club Road, Route 4, with expansion into buffer areas between the two properties. Again, as background, the Site Plan Review Committee last reviewed this project at its November 20th, 2020 meeting. There were two abutters who spoke at, the Planning Board, excuse me. So the Site Plan Review Committee tabled this item with a detailed list of modifications that they were looking for, additional information and modification. As the Planning Board had already advertised the public hearing, they held a public hearing the next day, which would have been December, oh, excuse me. Have to go back, I'm sorry, I didn't write this down. Hold on a second, please. It would have been at the November, see, the Site Plan Review Committee reviewed it at the November 17th meeting. And then the Planning Board opened the public hearing on November 18th. There were, let's see, we had at least one abutter who spoke at that meeting. It was Dean and Lori Landry, and I do know this, that we have an L. Landry in the audience this evening. The recommendation is that you take this item off the table, hold the public hearing, continue the public hearing, if you will, receive any additional testimony, and then close the public hearing, which again will set that 60-day clock. And then thereafter, to table the item until such time as the revised materials have been submitted and/or you reach that deadline. I know that also Kristen Collins appears to be in the audience, she's representing the applicant as well. You, you may want to hear from them prior to reopening the public hearing so that there's additional information presented that anybody who's in the audience might be able to respond to.
Yeah, it sounds good, yeah. Someone wants to speak on behalf of the applicant? Is it Kristen or Tom Harmon?
I think Tom can speak to where we are from a technical standpoint right now first, and then I just want to make a quick ask of the board, if we could.
Essentially, we are, at this point in time, moving forward with coming up with a solution to the requirements of the Sanford Code Office and the Planning Department. Okay, and that's something we're working on then, where there will be submitted more materials within the next couple of weeks.
And one of the big challenges for this site is getting, you know, the degree of catch on reclamation that would make everyone feel comfortable. And so one of the ideas we're considering is a large pond. And that is something that can be allowed under the ordinance, but obviously that is, you know, a technical review undertaking that hasn't happened yet. So what I would like to ask is, if you do go forward and continue the public hearing tonight, that we would happily agree to and request an additional 60 days. We're gonna get these revised materials in. We have a pretty substantially revised operations manual, as well as revised plans to submit to the Planning Office. And frankly, we just wanted to get through this meeting or the last version of this meeting that got postponed. And then we're gonna do that, and that'll give everybody in the Planning Office a little bit of time to work through it. And we're absolutely committed to getting this project done and approved as soon as we can, but another 60 days would help.
Okay, so we'll have 60 days, I think, from, from tonight, is that correct?
60 days from the close of the public hearing, which I think is tonight, if that's what you're going forward with.
I believe so.
So we would ask, yeah, we're just asking for another 60 days beyond that. And we're completely okay if you want us to just come back at a meeting in a month and let you know what progress we've made and make the ask at that time too. But one way or the other, it's not likely that with the changes that we're putting forward, we're gonna ram it through in 30 days. uh, we're going to ram it through in, in thirty days, nor do we want to.
So I'm just trying to, trying to understand what you're asking for. You're looking for sixty days and then sixty days more? For a total of a hundred and twenty days, is that what you're asking for?
Yeah, yeah.
I believe our intention tonight is to close the public hearing, so from that point, you would have sixty days.
I think that's subject to, um, extension by agreement of the planning board and the applicant. Um, and, and so that's what we'd be asking. And like I said, we can absolutely come back after we've met with, um, with planning on these changes and, and let you know exactly what needs to be done. The planning director can give you a little better sense of what she feels is needed. Um, because this, this will be a substantial modification of the application.
Right, so this has been before us for quite a while, so I think there's been, there's been a significant amount of time available for this. So I think a sixty day, sixty days from tonight, I believe, is, is what we're, what we're working on.
What we may need to do, um, if that's what we're working with, is we may need to bifurcate this application. Um, and focus on renewing the part of the project that's already been in operation. And then delay the, the portion about extension into the neighboring parcel, um, until we can get through that full process. And that's something that we can talk about with Beth.
Okay. Um, I think for, for tonight's interest, did, did you want to make a presentation on the application?
No, because we're, the changes are going to be substantial enough that it really wouldn't make too much sense.
Okay, so does that, does that conclude your presentation?
I think it does. Tom, do you have anything else?
Not at this time, no.
Okay, and with that, I'll declare the public hearing open. Is there anybody who would like to speak on behalf of the application? Anybody would like to speak? You can speak up or use your raise your hand feature on Zoom. Okay, any, anyone who is opposed to the application who would like to make a comment? Make sure you use the, the raise your hands, uh, feature, or you can speak up on Zoom if you want, just make sure.
Anybody would like to speak?
Ah, yes, can we have your name?
Dean and Lori Landry.
Yes, who ahead would you call now?
Yes, we just want to know if, if, if there's any processes in place for any water, uh, testing. We brought this up last time and we, we didn't get a response, so if we, we just need to know if there's going to be a testing process at all during this whole project.
You want me to answer that?
If you can, yes, please.
Sure, no, there definitely will be testing process. It becomes a question of exactly what that testing process is, how much more infrastructure we have to put in to accomplish what we need to accomplish.
And this is testing our water supply to all the abutting?
We'll be testing the groundwater, quality testing to the groundwater.
And we'll have access to those results?
There'll be monitoring of water levels and quality testing of parameters of the existing groundwater.
And those results will be provided to the town and through them, uh, through the town, you would have access to them.
Very good. There will be public, they'll be going to the DEP also.
Okay, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
That's okay. Um, is there anybody else who would like to speak, um, as opposed to the application? Any general comments, either for or against? Hey, I don't see the raise hand feature on there, as, if anybody's trying to speak, just make sure you're not muted. Okay, not seeing any other comments, so with that, I will declare the public hearing closed. Okay, so what's the next step after this? Oh, we need our motion to, uh, table, is that correct? Yes.
Correct.
So I'll make a motion that we table this item.
Second it Diane.
Yeah, I heard Tom first.
So we'll do the roll call, Diane.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Oliver.
Yes.
Jack.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Crystal.
Yes.
And Lenny.
Yes.
So the motion to table this project has passed seven zero.
Okay. All right, so that will be seeing that in, in the future. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us tonight.
Thanks.
Okay, I think we're ready for other business, is that the, uh, planning directors of work?
Yep. Um, so several pieces of information, this is all pretty much just the communications. Um, the first thing is, uh, you may have noticed, um, in this last, actually, you wouldn't have noticed in this last packet, but in the next packet that you get, we will be sending out one email uh, to the site plan review committee and the planning board, so a single email rather than sending them separately. It'll give you, um, the, uh, link to the materials. Um, you will be responsible for reviewing the, um, agenda uh, for the planning board. Uh, there are some items that go on the site plan review committee's agenda that don't necessarily come to the planning board. Um, so each of the groups, the site plan review committee and the planning board would need to look at their agendas. The agendas will tell you what the call in information is, uh, for the meeting. Um, and, um, and then you're going to need to go to the particular packet that's relevant to what's going to be on your agenda. Um, this is going to, uh, you, you get the emails anyway about the site plan review committee agendas. We're just going to try to consolidate it so that it's a little bit less, you know, administrative work on our end. Um, so just heads up, you know, make sure you go to the agenda. Um, for, uh, whichever group you're looking at, Jack obviously will be looking at both of them. You may choose to only look at the planning board's agenda. Um, and then you're going to want to go into the packets. And the, and the reason that we're, we're trying to do this in, in addition to saving us some time is we're posting the same information to both the site plan review committee and the planning board. You still will end up getting, um, uh, an email on Tuesday afternoon before the meeting that will tell you what the site plan review committee's recommendations are and may include findings of fact if they weren't included in the packet that went out previous meeting. Any questions about that before I move to the next item?
Yeah, just one quick question, are they going to be posted separately on the city website or are they going to be posted under one link?
It'll be under one link.
It will, okay.
And that's the information that will be shared with the abutters, you know, when the abutter notices are sent out. Okay. Uh, and usually in the abutter, uh, definitely in the abutters notice, we talk with them about both the site plan meeting and the planning board meeting, if it's going to both of them. So the abutters should have pretty clear direction if they read their notice. Um, any other questions about that? Okay, the next thing, um, was we are proposing, um, some very minor adjustments of the standard conditions of approval. Really no change in text, we're just suggesting that the numbers go from straight, um, you know, numeric to Roman numerals, um, that way there'll be less confusion, um, when we're using the same kind of numbering system for both what the conditions of approval are and looking at the standard conditions so that there's no, you know, no conflict. So, uh, Roman numeral one would replace the number one, Roman numeral two would replace the number two. And so I'm asking you if you are okay with that. Um, and if so, I guess I would be looking actually for a motion to make that change, um, and a second, and then a vote.
Motion to change to Roman numerals.
Okay, Crystal.
So the roll call, Diane.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Oliver.
Yes.
Jack. Jack.
You're muted, Jack.
Jack.
You're muted, Jack. There you go.
Yes.
Okay. Tom.
Yes.
Crystal.
Yeah.
And Lenny.
Yes.
Motion to pass to, are the motion passed seven zero?
Okay, um, the next thing I wanted to update you on is, uh, the comprehensive plan. At the last meeting, we talked a bit, the meeting that wasn't a meeting, we talked a little bit about, uh, the status of the comp plan. Um, I wanted to make you aware that, um, uh, the city council, uh, became aware that part of what's delaying progress, um, on, um, on doing the update um, has been staffing shortages, um, it certainly has been complicated by COVID and the additional work associated with dealing with that, um, uh, and, uh, um, and, and having an, you know, having more applications than normal. Um, and so they, zoning subcommittees, after the council kind of acknowledged this, the zoning subcommittee, um, met with, uh, the city manager and myself and Jamie Cole and, and basically said to the city manager, we need to get some more resources to help the planning department out here. And so, um, the city manager and I and Molly, uh, spent some time looking at some options. We came up with five different options and made a recommendation to the city manager, who then made it to the zoning subcommittee, who then made it to the city council, that, um, we hire SMPDC, Southern Main Planning and Development Commission to assist us with some of the data gathering and, uh, development of the data tables and the Excel graphics and interpret those tables. Um, so, uh, Tuesday night, today's Wednesday, I guess it was last night, the city council approved, um, the memorandum of understanding with the Southern Main Planning and Development Commission. Um, uh, for, uh, seven thousand dollars for them to assist us in preparing these documents. Um, the manager signed that MOU, uh, today, I'll be sending it out to, uh, SMPDC for their signature and return, um, tomorrow. And, uh, this morning, Molly and I met with, uh, representatives of SMPDC to begin the process of, um, engaging them and, and helping us. Um, so I just wanted to let you know that we're all aiming still for September. Um, you know, the end of the summer to try to get this wrapped up. I can't tell you if we're going to follow that schedule yet, but I can tell you that one of the first things we're asking for them to do is to give us, um, a schedule. Um, and they know that's what we're looking for. Um, they're committing, you know, probably eight to ten, uh, to twenty hours, eight to ten hours a week to be working on this, we're looking at, um, about a hundred hours all told. If they can move more quickly, then they'll move more quickly. Um, any questions or, um, uh, comments about that? Okay, you'll, you'll continue to hear more from me, uh, and about this as the summer proceeds. Um, the last thing I wanted to give you an update, um, on was the mineral extraction task force. Um, the first meeting of the task force was held, um, the, I believe we had all of the members of the task force there except for one, uh, who had a, a personal conflict for that meeting. It was, um, a relatively good meeting, um, uh, there was, I think, um, pretty good consensus about, you know, potentially moving to a, an annual license. Um, that would be after one more review for the five year permit. Um, and then it would no longer be a five year permit, it would become a permanent permit. Um, uh, although the city council, uh, could choose not to grant the annual license, which would in effect immediately shut the operation down. Um, uh, there was discussion about, you know, if you've got violations and or non, areas of non-compliance here, but you're doing well in other areas, that the shutdown might extend to simply those areas of non-compliance until they were brought back into compliance. Um, there was a pretty interesting conversation, um, the city manager, uh, spent a fair amount of time looking at the DEP regulations as well as municipal regulations, I think he said, from twenty eight communities. Um, and one of the things that he found, um, was we're all talking about the same stuff, including DEP. So, um, while the applicants were saying, oh, DEP is, um, much more specific and there are some cases where there is more specificity, um, uh, in other cases, it's every bit is, as open um, and left up to the interpretation of the reviewer as it is in Sanford. Um, um, uh, he, Steve did identify the city of Augusta's, um, um, ordinance as a particularly good one. Um, I think in part it was the specificity, again, there's a lot of areas that are very, very similar to ours. Um, uh, but the, um, the thing that's really nice about the Augusta ordinance is that this is another service center, this is a city. This is not a, a, you know, a small rural or suburbanizing community, it's, it's a comparable, I would argue, to, uh, Sanford, better comparable than a lot of the other communities ordinances. Um, so it, it was, it was very positive, uh, um, it moved relatively well. Um, and the next meeting is happening Monday night. Um, what I am doing to help prepare for that meeting is I'm creating a, um, a table that will have, um, what, you know, a topic area, uh, D, how DEP is handling it, how Sanford is currently handling it and how Augusta is handling it. And then an, an open column for each of those items so people can take notes as we're talking things through. Um, everybody acknowledged that, um, you know, that they're, that going through the standards could be some of the places where there's, um, uh, more friction, shall we say, than what occurred at the, uh, the first meeting. Um, uh, but in general, I think it was, it was a positive step forward. Um, uh, we had a lot of participation by the two industry representatives. Um, not so much participation by the watershed representative or the, you know, the, uh, and the conservation representative, um, but they both acknowledged that as we got into the standards, that's where they would more like, be more likely to be engaging. Um, so, uh, positive, I'd say, um, reasonable progress, um, a fair amount of work still ahead of us. Um, any questions or comments about that? Okay. Uh, feel free to reach out, um, if, you know, it, it, as things progress, if you want to see more detail, let me know and I'll be happy to share it, everything at this point is an interim work product. And that's the end of my report.
That was short tonight.
Yep.
Okay, so I guess that brings us up to next item on our general's communications. Anybody have, uh, have something they would like to share with us?
Mr. Chair.
Um, I think I, I heard Tom first, sorry, I'll tell.
I just had a question about the sixty days, so, so we had the discussion, the question came up in the applicant. Um, the sixty, the way I understood the sixty day rule was to prevent applications from wangling on the table, right? So, the idea is we want to start to see movement on these applications as, um, so that, so they don't stand the table, so the sixty days was really to just make sure that they kept things moving. Uh, so, would it be out of the realm of the possible if we start to see good movement on something to extend it beyond sixty days?
Well, I think they're, I, I think they're going to move ahead with the, uh, portion of the application, there's something that they want to change, but they have to bring that to the attention of the planning department anyway.
I just, I guess I, I would not want, I would not want applicant, applicants to push something through in sixty days if it's not complete, just to get it through. You know, she said something about bifurcating the plans and, and then submitting another set of plans for the other half of the project, that just seems like we're going to go through the motions twice, so.
I don't think so, I think they're proposing something different for that application, so that's, that's going to come back to us as a separate matter. I think there's two separate issues there, I don't, you know, I think what she was initially looking for was a hundred and twenty days to get back to us, period. And I think, I think we should, you know, enforce the, the sixty days to at least start the process running. If they want to make a change to the application or an amendment to it, then that's something that they can do. That would be a different matter. That would be a different matter.
I just wanna make sure it's clear that at the end of 60 days, if there is motion, we're moving things along, we're not just gonna drop it.
If they haven't come with an amendment, then we're gonna take action on what they have.
Okay.
Well, this was taken up at Site Plan Review in November. It's July now. So it's been on the table for over six months.
Right, and I understand that. And I'm thinking just not this specific project, but we have not been enforcing our own rule. We just started enforcing the rule, and I think it's important for us to enforce this rule. I just want, really it was a point of clarification. 60 days is not considered hard and fast. I didn't understand it today.
Right. So actually, I'd like to just say a couple of things. So Tom, typically this kind of deadline in the ordinance is intended to be in the interest of the applicant so that the Planning Board wouldn't drag its feet on acting. However, if you do a straight-faced read of it, it's also useful for the problem that the Planning Board has been experiencing here, that the applicant has just been sitting on his application without making the revisions. So the provision does say you can extend that 60 days if it's mutually agreeable. So just because the applicant wants it doesn't mean you have to go along with it. If the Planning Board wants it, but the applicant doesn't, again, you're stuck. So what this would do is allow the applicant to bring forward, hopefully to address the issues that were put in front of them back in November. And then again, on April 2nd, when we had an extensive meeting with the applicant to go over all of the revised materials they submitted. And again, we've heard nothing since then except for some verbal communication with the applicant's attorney about three or four weeks ago, basically saying that they were rethinking their entire approach to this. And I think that's what you kind of heard a little bit of tonight, that they would like to go with this completely different approach. I'll tell you that this completely different approach is one that has never been proposed and acted on in Sanford in the past. And so it's not gonna be an easy review to go to that approach. So I think what you heard Kristen suggesting when Lenny gave her pushback about the 120 days was, "Well, maybe we'll finish up this application and then come back in for an amendment." Remember, there are a number of areas of non-compliance on this site that have not been dealt with for months and months and months now, if not years. So you will have that option when they come back in. If you're, you know, comfortable with what they're proposing, you can take action on that particular application. There's nothing that says they can't come back in and ask for an amendment. I will tell you that their permit expired on this project three years ago in June this year.
And the reason I brought this up wasn't specifically for this. I mean, this is kind of a, this is a headache, but this is the first set that we are imposing this rule. And I was all set with not giving them 120 days. We should only, we should hold them to 60 days. They can come back in 60 days and we can have a discussion and see where to go from there. That's just what I wanted to make sure was clear. Setting aside this specific application, if we see motion on anything that we tabled for 60 days, we can make a decision and work with the applicant and extend it. That's really all I wanted to know. I get it, this one's a mess, so.
All your options are there. You can approve it, you can deny it, you can give them an extension.
So if we deny it, do they have to reapply? Is that more money?
Yes, but if you deny it, that also, I think, shuts them down.
But they could appeal it, too.
They could appeal it.
Yeah, I don't think the 60-day rule wasn't meant to be, wasn't meant to browbeat people. I mean, it was meant to try and just move the process along, that's all. I think as Beth said, yeah, there is flexibility. So I mean, we're not standing here with a baseball bat to beat people if something's going on.
Yeah, got it. That was really the basis of my question. Had nothing to do with this particular application, just to make sure we were clearly, that we had a clear picture on the rule. That's all.
Yeah, I think one of the lessons learned here is close the public hearing. You can always advertise a new one if there's relevant new information and you want additional information. You know, opportunity for the public to comment.
I mean, the approval process is not open-ended. There needs to be a start point and a finish point somewhere. Okay, Diane, did you wanna make a comment?
Yeah, I do. I have several comments. Number one, Beth thought, yes, I received an email from the codes. My questions were answered. The second thing I wanted to ask you is, without naming certain extraction pits, what is just a general rule in regards to fires in the pits?
I don't know if there are general rules. I know that after you raised the concern that you did about a fire being reported in one of our pits, I did go talk with the fire marshal today as well as the code enforcement officer, and neither of them were aware that there was a fire. And I think what the fire marshal suggested was that obviously they must have contained it because it never got big enough that it came to the attention of the fire department. Beyond that, I don't know what their policy is. Diane, I think you're muted.
Sorry. I asked that question because, you know, the fire or the smoke was spotted before any phone calls were made, and they had to go looking for it, and that's where they found it. So wondering.
Apparently it was small enough that they did not take action. The city did not take action.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other comments from committee members? I'll just make one. I just wanna thank everybody for showing up today. I know we were in a tight spot for our last meeting because we had to actually cancel the meeting because we didn't have enough members in attendance. So just remind everybody of the, you know, we want good attendance. If we can get it, obviously. Sometimes life gets in the way and you can't make it. Things happen. So just let us know as far in advance as possible. So we're not all sitting here six-thirty and having to tell people that have gathered for their application that they have to wait another couple of weeks. So that's why I thank everybody for showing up tonight. And I say, just in the future, just remember, try to give us notice. Make sure you contact me, make sure you contact Beth, use the phone, use the email, whatever works best for you.
And Lenny, if I could follow up on that, please remember, you will always get an email from us on the Friday before the meeting with a link to the packet and the agenda. If you do not get that, contact us right away. That means that there's a problem. We want you to be prepared for the meeting. And so if there was a glitch on our end that it didn't go out or somebody typed in an email address the wrong way, we wanna hear from you as soon as possible. So by Saturday morning, if you haven't seen an email, send Molly and me a quick email saying, "I didn't get my packet." You know, hearing from you on Wednesday saying, you know, "Are we having a meeting tonight?" or, you know, "What's the link information?", that says to us that you didn't get your packet or you've lost it. And we certainly will respond to you and try to get you what you need. But you should know that there are two key dates, that Friday before the meeting and then that Tuesday afternoon. If we can't meet those deadlines ourselves, we are at least gonna be sending you an email telling you that we haven't met that deadline and to watch for it because we will be sending it out as soon as we can. Sometimes we send out partial packets and then you'll get a heads-up that there's gonna be more information coming. And so sometimes that will happen. But, you know, take it upon yourself to look at those two dates as real dates. And if you don't get that communication from us, there's a problem potentially on our end. And you need to let us know that as soon as possible so that we can, you know, help you get prepared.
Hey Beth, is there any way that you can send that stuff to at least my personal address, email address?
I can do that, Jack. The problem is that that means that if there's a FOIA request, then they will have access to your email, your personal email, which is why we set it up for the city.
The problem is when you've got stuff like plaques that need to be signed, I don't look at my email from the city until that Friday.
Yep.
Molly's been good about texting me and sending me stuff to my personal email. And if somebody wants to look at my personal email, they're more than welcome to. I mean.
It's the same thing with texts as well, Jack. So we're happy to send it out to multiple addresses if that's what you'd like. You just have to be willing to accept the potential consequences, that you're opening up your personal email, your personal text accounts if there happens to be a FOIA request.
I've tried to set it up so I can get it on Thunderbird, but I can't get it to work. I tried to set up a rule, a rule on the webmail, send it to my address, and that's not working. So I just look at it Fridays generally or the weekend before a meeting.
Yep. So what I'm gonna say is that if you would like us to include both of your email addresses, your personal account and the city account, send Molly and me an email asking for that. And then we will definitely add you in. Jack, I know you've said this now, and so I'm gonna make sure that we do that for Jack. But if anybody else wants us to be using your personal email because you're not going on the city's account that often, just let us know. Just know that you're assuming a certain level of personal risk there. If you're comfortable with it, we don't have a problem with it. Why don't we put a deadline on that, although we can always extend it, but just so that we can get it prepared for the next packet? Why don't we say, "Send us an email by the end of the week, sometime over the weekend, something like that, so that the next packet we send out, which will be a week from Friday, will have enough time to build that into our revised mailing lists." Everybody okay with that?
I got one quick question for Jonathan, too, about the plaques. I went in to sign one of those the other day, and I know we were looking at the plans. So are those the right ones to be signed?
Yeah, so I asked Molly about that, and it's okay if it says proposed.
So proposed is okay. They could file them like that, okay. So I don't need to come back in? Okay.
I asked that. I know that Diane was not present at that meeting along with a couple other people. I asked that. I think it is, Crystal, Oliver came in today. Crystal and Tom, if you guys find yourself with some extra time, please come in. We only had five in attendance at that meeting and we need four signatures.
I think I already kept them signed.
Did you? Okay.
I think I was the first.
Yeah. So whoever was in attendance at the June 6th meeting, please, please, please come in and sign them. People have been waiting a good couple of weeks to take them to the registry.
I can come in tomorrow morning.
Thank you, Crystal.
You're welcome.
Okay, Beth, did you have a work session for us or are we gonna not have that tonight?
No, I would like us to not have it tonight.
All right, so if we're all good, maybe we can have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, Crystal.
So we'll do the roll call. Diane?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
And Lenny?
Yes.
So the motion to adjourn passes 7-0.
We're adjourned. Have a good day, everybody.